Okay, we're recording. Do we need to test the recordings? Or have we done this already? Everybody? Nancy? Nancy? Oh, she's outside.
Nancy, can you hear us?
Can you hear us back there? Everybody can hear? Alrighty. Alrighty. This is the welcome, and this is the special city council meeting, September 22nd, 2021. And I will call the meeting to order. Is your mic on? I thought it was. Is my mic on? It's on. Okay. So I will call the meeting to order, and we will have the information.
Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for the day that we can come together as a city council and as citizens of the city of Wood Creek and anyone else who's looking at it on live stream. Father, we just pray that we would have you in mind as we make the decisions that we make. You are omniscient, you're omnipresent. With those things in mind, Father, we just pray that we'll go forward and make some very good decisions today. And we ask that you bless each person here, each person in the livestream, and the city of Wood Creek, state of Texas, and the United States with Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Mayor Gloria Whitehead?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Aurora LeBrun?
Here.
Councilmember G D Brizendine?
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamburg?
Here.
Councilmember Brent Polley?
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Rasko? We have a quorum, and we'll proceed. Public comments. Do we have any signed up sheets for public comments? So we have no public comments at this time. We'll proceed to the consent agenda. Item one. Approval of financial statements for August 2021. Approval of the city council meeting minutes from September 8th, 2021. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I made a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hamburg. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
We have a second by Councilmember Brizendine. Clerk, excuse me, the city secretary will call the roll. Mayor Pro Tem LeBrun?
Aye.
Councilmember Brizendine?
Aye.
Councilmember Polley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rasko?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamburg?
Aye.
We have unanimous approval of the consent items. We will go to the regular agenda. Item three. Discuss and take appropriate action on an ordinance of the city of Wood Creek, Texas, adopting the fiscal year 2021-22 budget beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, in accordance with Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 102, providing for the filing of the budget, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Do I have a motion regarding item three?
Madam, Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the 2021-22 budget as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brizendine, seconded by Councilmember Hamburg. Discussion on the item.
Seven.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Rasko?
Yeah, I have to say I've been a little bit bothered by this since we started doing the workshops and, you know, just trying to figure out how the budget works. And one of the things that I've noticed is that, you know, we've done a really good job thanks to this good fiscal responsibility of bringing in more money and spending less money than we tend to project. And I just, I'm looking at, you know, the tax rate and the budget. I just think it would be prudent of us and would show some responsibility to our citizens to look at, just maybe taking some transfer from reserves to cover the difference and going with the no new revenue tax rate. I just think it sends a message that we respect our citizens and what they've been doing, and that we're good stewards of their money. So that's just what I've been thinking.
Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Polley?
I have some concern, or I guess a big concern, that there's zero money allocated for traffic enforcement. I think the folks on Wood Creek Drive, Brook Hollow, Brook Meadow, Augusta are going to be concerned about that, and I have issues with the fact that we have completely de-emphasized that in the budget. I'm a little concerned as well how somehow, it looks like in 2016 we had around a $300,000 budget, now we've got an $850,000 budget. It's just not clear to me how we got there. It's difficult though to pick through here and specifically say, that's too much, that's too much. I just, that just seems odd to me. But yeah, the main thing is, I would like to have seen something to do with traffic enforcement, traffic calming. That is a big issue for us, and I hate to see it just completely zeroed out like that.
Is there any other discussion? City Secretary, will you please call the roll vote?
I vote aye with the stipulation that we can talk about the tax rate.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the rest of that.
Aye.
I believe that's going to be an item two. Or, excuse me, four. Councilmember Brizendine?
Aye.
Councilmember Polley?
I'm going to abstain. I'm not, I'm confused by the traffic issue, and I don't like the fact that this may lead to a tax increase, so I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Hamburg?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem LeBrun?
Aye.
We have motion carries with four ayes, one of extension. We'll go to item four on the regular agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action on an ordinance of the city of Wood Creek, Texas, approving the certified appraisal roll, setting the tax rate, levying and assessing ad-horm taxes for the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Wood Creek, Texas, for fiscal year 2021-22. Apportioning the levies for specific purposes, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Brizendine?
Yes, Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the voter approval rate as has been presented.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Brizendine to approve the voter approval rate on the tax rate. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a second by Councilmember, second by Councilmember Hamburg. Do we have discussion?
I have a couple of comments. I feel like this is an insignificant burden on our citizens. We've had two public hearings, and not one comment has made by a citizen against this. And also, I feel like that if we're going to proceed to improve the roads in our city, that an incremental amount of money being levied over the course of years is much better than us hitting them with a huge bond or a large tax increase, as we've had to do in the past. So those are my comments for my motion.
Is there any other discussion?
Just one.
Councilmember Hamburg?
Thank you. Looking at the difference between the two tax rates, between the no new revenue and the voter approval, it's a difference of $2.40 per $100,000.
Yes.
Which, if you do the math, is somewhere between $7 and $10 per household, basically. I think we're doing better with that than we'd be doing with the GDP in general, well below that. And for that reason, I'd say that we should move forward with the voter approval rate.
Councilmember Rasko?
Yeah, and I just agree, it's insignificant. And we can go the other direction. And by going the other direction and adopting the no new revenue rate, it just, I mean, it's a little bit, but it sends a message that, you know, we care about it. We don't absolutely need the money. It only, it's a $9,000 difference. We can find that $9,000, you know, wherever we want. And it's like, who wants to, you know, even if, even if the net is that I'm writing a smaller check, you know, to Hayes County, I could write a slightly smaller check to Hayes County, and our citizens go, hey, you took one for the team, thank you. So it's insignificant either way. And so we could just as easily go low by a fraction or go up by a fraction. It just sends a better message not to go up.
We're really not going up on the tax rate. We're going down on the tax rate.
You need to be recognized, don't you?
Councilmember Brizendine, would you please repeat your comment?
I'm sorry, I was not recognized.
You are recognized, and please repeat your comment.
My comment was that it's such a small amount that, in reality, I don't believe that any citizen is going to notice a $14 difference on a $4,000 tax bill at the end of the year.
Councilmember, Councilmember Polley?
Yes, I mean, the voter rate, basically, I think is the highest rate we can set until we have to have an election to approve that. So we went as high as we could without getting voter input, and I don't like that. It's still a tax increase, I don't care how you characterize it. I think we ought to do, like every other household does, look at how much money we have and then budget accordingly. And we could easily budget for a no new tax rate, and it wouldn't be that much of a difference in our budget. So I can't vote, I can't support a tax increase, no matter how insignificant it supposedly is. Also, we could easily revise the budget to where it would fit into a no new tax rate. So I don't understand this, and I'm not going to support it.
I just want to-
Councilmember Rasko?
Thank you. I just want to add one more thing. It's like, when this resolution, I mean, so when we get down to the ordinance that passes, I mean, the language, you know, in that ordinance says, will effectively be raised by 3.5% and will lower taxes in operation, taxes for maintenance and operations. So, you know, as far as it goes, it's funny just because of the amount of money we're being able to bring into the city based on assessments and more homes and more, you know, tax entities in the neighborhood. You know, it's like, we can argue whether it's a tax increase or a tax decrease. It's a little of both. And so, you know, if we took the, if we took the, you know, 2047 number, you know, then we're not going to be applying an effective 3.5% increase as we state in our own ordinance. So that was just it. I mean, that's what's going to hit social media. And so, you know, we can, we can be, you know, supportive, or we can, you know, just sort of keep taxing as much as we're able to without having to go to the voters for approval. And that's what we've done year after year after year.
May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to go back, and I don't believe Councilmember Polley was present. When we first discussed the proposed tax rate, I did some calculations-
Can you speak up into your mic?
I'm sorry. When we first discussed the proposed tax rates, I did some calculation because I am very much aware, and as supported by the article in the newspaper today, demographics in this city have not changed, and we still have a significant number of residents who are retired and on a fixed income, like me. The 2020 tax rate, which was .2231, if your house was valued at $350,000, you would have paid $780 in taxes. With the tax rate that we are discussing for approval, the .2071, if your value remains at $350,000, you will be paying $724.80 for a decrease of $56. The issue that comes into play is the appraisals. There's an anticipation that appraisals in Hayes County, Wood Creek included, will increase for about 10%. In some areas, a little lower, some areas higher. So if your property increases 10% on the voter approval rate compared to this year's 2020 tax rate, let's say your house now appraises at $375, if we kept that 2020 tax rate, you would pay $836.63. On the rate that we are proving, you will pay $776.63, in fact, $60 less.
That's correct.
So this is not, we cannot, we are not the Hayes County appraisal district. We have, we do not have control over the appraisals. So if your appraisal increases, but you will pay slightly more. If it doesn't, in fact, you will be paying less than you paid this year.
Manager Lewis, would you mind addressing, because I have a kind of a question myself, whether it makes a difference between these two choices, the $7,000, but how does that affect the next budget?
As an old finance director, they had basically, it's always recommended to at least go, change the tax rate so you're collecting a little bit more money. It's just like, because next year, the city will still be limited to the 3.5% unless it goes to bond election. So basically, you're losing money for next year too, because you go on the current rate now, and then next year, if council is sitting here and they decide to go to 3.5, they've actually lost one. And, you know, it's one of those things that, it's always recommended through the Government Finance Officers Association of Texas to at least bring in a little bit more taxes, just because you never can recoup it.
So the fact is, you can't recoup it. Is that what we're talking about here?
That's right.
Okay, I understand. Thank you for that.
Point of information?
Yes.
As an old finance director, did Mr. Lewis mean that he was a previous finance director or just an old finance director?
I'm still a finance director.
You're still old.
I'm still old.
Well, I know that this is probably, you know, confusing number information for the citizens listening, watching, and learning, but I just wanted to know, if we lose the money, do we lose the $7,000 if you were to him, talked about taking that lower rate? It's not a matter of not making any difference because it's $7,000. Is that correct or not? Okay, thank you. All right. So is there any other discussion? City Secretary, will you please call the vote roll, the roll for the vote, please? Councilmember Rasko?
Aye.
Councilmember Brizendine?
Aye.
Councilmember Polley?
Not going to vote to rate taxes, no.
Councilmember Hamburg?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem LeBrun? Motion carries, three ayes, two noes. We'll go to the next item, item five. Discuss and take appropriate action on a resolution ratifying the recently adopted budget that contains a property tax rate that raises more total property taxes than the previous year. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the new ordinance that we've been previously discussing, so that we can go forward with the new budget.
Do I have a second?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution ratifying.
Ratifying.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Brizendine, second. Councilmember Rasko?
Yeah, I believe in supporting the body. Vote was taken. It's three to two. Not going to try to offer any amendments or anything. It's just like, we, you know, I said in our case, I think that it's a good discussion, and, you know, I support, you know, what we decided to do after it's been decided to be done. So I intend to vote.
Thank you. No other discussion? City Secretary will call the roll for the vote. Councilmember Polley?
No.
Councilmember Rasko?
Aye.
Councilmember Brizendine?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamburg?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem LeBrun?
Aye.
Motion carries for one. We will go to item six. Discuss and take appropriate action on possible future roads, or, excuse me, possible future repairs, overlays, and/or reconstruction of city of Wood Creek streets and drainage, along with financing options. And I just would like to make a comment here that we have already taken action on our Wood Creek Drive roads project, and we felt like it would potentially necessary that we go forward after that step to have next steps on the issue of resolution of the road situation in the city. So the purpose of this particular agenda item was for us to just begin to discuss the future of these items listed, and to have a discussion today that I hope that the motion that we can make will be to accomplish discussions, starting these first discussions, and setting a hearing, a motion to set a hearing at the next meeting or soon, to have a public hearing on the matter as well. So that said, do I have a motion to begin discussion?
I move that we enter into the discussion for future repairs, overlays, and reconstruction of city of Wood Creek streets.
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem LeBrun, seconded by Councilmember Brizendine. So we are open for discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be possible for the city manager to first address some of our financial options so that before we go into discussion, we kind of have a preview of what our possibilities are?
Absolutely. And also, Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem LeBrun, you have-
Yes.
Recognized.
I want to restate, early today, I had an email from a citizen in response to-
Can you talk louder?
I'm sorry. Early today, I had an email from a citizen, and she requested that we talk about options to finance road repairs, including extending our current tax note or issuing a bond. So I'm glad that you asked that. So if you would go ahead and, Mr. Lewis.
So basically, I want to start out with that what we have in reserves has taken us since 1984 to get to that point. As you know, that our financial advisors are recommending that we maintain that $500,000 in reserves, and that's in case the city ever issues tax notes again, or if they issue a bond of some kind by vote of the people. I did contact our financial advisors and asked them to give me a, how much money could be raised through a tax note and keep the INS or interest, principal and interest payments at the same or at the same tax rate. And I asked them to look at about .08, and that's what, we're right there in that range right now. And basically, if we reissued the tax notes as they are now and rolled in the old tax note, then we could generate about almost $1.2 million. And that would be maintain the projected INS tax rate right at eight cents, and pays off the old tax note. But that would also extend our tax note down into 2028, because it's a seven-year issue.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah, twenty-eight. And that's as high as you can go. Of course, the council could look at wanting to generate more money. And so basically, you can think about 1.2 million is on eight cents, so 2.4 would be, you know, just 16 cents, and just keeps going up from there. And we're limited to about 10 million is what we can issue on tax notes. Now, the other option would be to go to a vote of the people. And I think the last time we looked at, we were looking at an overall tax rate with INS and also operations and maintenance would be around 55 cents. And that would be just to repair the, reconstruct or repair the roads. So we're talking about, you know, if it did another overlay, that's half a million dollars per mile. If you do a complete reconstruction, it's about a million dollars per mile. And so, but that would be a vote of the people and to see what they would say about that. And probably be on about a 20-year note is what we would be looking at, because if it's asphalt, you don't want your payments to last longer than what the actual age or the lifespan of the roadway is. And so, and so those are your options. But that is, both of them would be somehow affecting the tax rate.
As far as what we have right now, how long, what's the termination date approximately of our current note?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-four, yeah.
So it would extend the note by four years.
Four years. So it's 2024, and then extend it to 2028?
Right.
For 1.2 million.
For 1.2 million. And if this council ever would decide to do something like that, it takes about 30 days to issue a tax note.
And how much, I'm sorry, how much do we have to pay it down before we could get another note if we wanted to start rotating in rebuilding?
Probably would be, look at every three to four years. And also, that was based on that for 2022, we had the 8.98% increase in growth, and they estimated from 23 on no growth in our tax base. So, you know, so that would affect it too.
So obviously, citizens, all of us, for years and probably ongoing, want roads to be repaired and upgraded and taken care of. And we can all have a lot of lip service to that, but we have to have the money to do it. So I think that it's a good thing to start talking about, how are we going to actually pay for, and what do we want to pay for, and what is the timeframe that we would like to pay for this? So whether we take action as a council, it sounds like, on the tax note issue, is that correct? Or we go to a bond election with the people for a 20-year commitment? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what we- That's what we, we would be estimating.
So we have, we have choices, but I think it's time that we get on the record that the community knows and understands that these choices are available because we, as a community, have to decide how and what we want to do. We know what we want to happen, but how are we going to make it happen? I think that's what I'm real interested today in, in us starting that conversation. We're not making any decisions today on these kinds of options. And I do think that it's time that we start to be really realistic about it because how long do we want to wait? And I'll also ask for an update from Manager Lewis on our maintenance on potholes because I think people have asked quite a bit about that lately, and we do have a report on that.
Yes, we are advertising for an employee right now to do our contract to come in and do the pothole maintenance. I know we've had citizens volunteer. However, that could open up a liability to the city since they are not actually being paid by the city. And I wouldn't want anybody to get run over out there on behalf of the city, us actually sponsoring. But we do, we are looking for someone now. We did also speak with a contractor to do some street maintenance and pothole repair. And their quote came in way too high. Now, the other option would be also to go out like we did three years ago, probably? Yeah, about three years ago. And we did have a company come in and patch all the potholes and all the edge breaks. Then we had the county come in the next year to do it too. So those options are there too, to just go ahead and.
That was, that was in 2009, in the budget for 2019, and we spent about $46,000.
It was Hayden.
And they did a reasonable, I would say reasonably good job. One of the things.
We do have to mention, you know, as well, I know everybody is sick of hearing, although it's extremely important to, to talk about COVID. But again, COVID has had huge impact on our ability to contract, find workers for just about any project, not just a big project, but any project. We're talking putting a plant in a roadway. So it's been a, it's been a tough couple of years on that matter. And not that we have not tried or that we haven't been interested. It's just that workers have not responded. Councilmember Brizendine?
Are we still not getting any kind of response from the county on our inter-local agreement? Is that just off the table?
They are so booked for other work for the county that even if they said they could do it, they'll probably have to put us off, just like they did on the West End of Wood Creek Drive.
So for this budget that we just passed, we've got $20,000 in maintenance.
Right.
Which is going to be essential pothole, edge break, essential kind of maintenance because we know it takes more than that to do any major maintenance.
That's right.
So could we go out to Hayden and a couple of companies and just see what we can do about getting the major stuff done?
Yes. All we need is direction from the council.
Yeah. Well, one of the things, and I go back to my, I have to recognize.
Yes, of course.
One of the things I'd like to go back, we do have money on this budget for the drainage. And I know that in the past, we have fixed roads without taking the drainage issues, taking care of the drainage issues first. And I think that we should start planning for, for the drainage. And there will be some road, minor road repair around those areas where we fix the drainage. I think that we should do that. And we have the funds through the American Rescue Act as soon as possible before, because those areas keep getting worse and worse. And then we can look at maybe by, maybe by then, the situation that you have with the shortage of staffing and the shortage particularly in construction, maybe things will be better. But I do want to talk a little bit about the tax note. And this is, I know the tax note does not need to be approved by the citizens. When I came into council in November of 2016, that was when they were, the reconstruction of Brook Hollow was already well underway. Not well underway, but the plans for it. And it was done through a tax note. There was a lot of resentment is the word from our citizens that we, even though I, we had gone that route, that we have not taken them into account, that we had not asked for their opinion about those tax notes. It was expressed multiple times by citizens in public forums. In 2019, we did an assessment of all the streets in the city. And we came up with a priority. This was the citizens' work group later gave freeze pretty much affirmed what we had identified. In budget discussions such as this, Councilmember Escalante and I presented to council and did the option, suggested the option was available, like it's being done today, of a tax note. Council members at the time were firm that no tax note should be issued without citizens' input based on the experience we had with Brook Hollow. So I want to, I know those, some of those council members are no longer members that I am, and I want to express those concerns as well as the disapproval of our citizens, of our actions. If we issue a tax note, we must have the input of the citizens.
Councilmember Brizendine?
I agree with what Aurora is saying, and, and I think that's why that a public hearing would be necessary before we move forward to do anything. But one thing I'd like to point out, especially to the citizens, is that if we do a bond and we, we not only have the cost of the election, we need to do it to redo all eight roads at one time. We can't keep going back to the citizens for bond. We're talking about a 55 cent per thousand tax increase.
Well, that was what I was thinking. So, so if you remediate the drainage, you still are going to tear up the road. So then you have to repair it. And you have to repair it. You have to identify, but you have to identify where that is. Figure out, figure out what to do.
I'm not being caged, am I? I'm sitting here. Well, that thing.
Seems like yesterday I was watching people flying off that road.
Okay, sorry, we had some technical difficulties, but we are now got our cameras back on.
It's not video. We were not videoing, I hope, because I was eating my cookie.
You weren't doing that, though.
I thought we were not on. I was eating very nicely. You might gavel us that, I will.
We will resume the city council meeting. And we are discussing item six on the regular agenda regarding the repairs of roads, streets, drainage, et cetera, and financing options. So we're continuing our conversation and our discussion. Councilmember Rasko?
I just have a question. Because I, I wholeheartedly agree that we need to, I wholeheartedly agree that we need to do, you know, a public hearing, get input from the citizens before we make any kind of decisions like that. Is the difference between a public hearing and a town hall in that a public hearing is part of a regular city council agenda and a town hall is a special, like maybe offsite meeting?
Okay, basically, a public hearing, the citizens have the right to come speak their minds. Town hall meeting would be like we did when we were doing the Brook Hollow project. Citizens asked questions, we were able to respond back.
Oh, okay, so it's just a give and take?
That's right.
Question, answer, as opposed to a public hearing where they come up, say whatever they want? We can respond.
Well, only, in fact, you know, during a public hearing, basically, and Bud can jump in here, public hearing is to hear the voice of the citizens. And basically, the council does not have to respond. There's not a, a communication going back and forth.
But we're not, we're not forbidden to respond. Like in public comment, you don't respond to a public comment, but a public hearing, you know, there can be give and take between the council and the citizens in the audience.
There is nothing that expressly prohibits it. As a matter of practice, it's not a good idea to get in that give and take unless there is a form expressly established for that purpose. And.
So are you thinking that it would be a good idea to not only have the public hearing as part of our council, but also schedule a town hall?
Any and all.
Any and all, I like that too.
In, in local government, the more that you can provide for the open and honest flow of information and discussions between elected officials and the public, the better you are.
Yeah, if I may.
Is the town hall, however, not, not recorded?
You couldn't.
You could.
Okay, good.
You could, you could, you could livestream it as well, and, and it could be set up as, as the council determines. So, you know, say, say for instance, the, the council wanted to, to designate Brenton to be the individual to, to leave the town hall and, and be the moderator. Could, could handle it that way, and he would then have the ability to deflect something to a council member if they wanted to briefly respond, or he could be the focal point for answering the questions. So however we want to set it up, it can.
But the council would not be sitting as a council, a body. The council members attending a town hall would be there as individual citizens or?
If that's, if that's how we want to set it up, yes. We, there's, there's no hard and fast rules on this. All that, all that we need to do is ensure that if we're going to have the council there, we post notice of quorum.
But it's not a council meeting, it's a town hall, so it's not for interaction as council members with citizens at a town hall.
I don't know if you can ever.
Not.
I mean, if, if it relates to city business, then I don't, I don't think that you can, you can have the luxury of saying, I'm not here as a council member. But if it's nothing to do with city business, then sure, you're, you're allowed to be a private citizen. But insofar as it is a city town hall about city business and you show up, you're there.
But we're not, we're not conducting that town hall as a council, a sitting council.
Can I ask a question? So if it's a setup as a town. So if it's a setup as a town hall meeting, and they attend as council members, but it's not an official meeting, a council meeting, then you don't have to have the super majority in attendance to hold the town hall meeting?
No.
Right?
Who's hosting the town hall?
It would be the city of Wood Creek.
Well, the city, if we're trying to get more input on this agenda item, for instance, that we're discussing. And Councilmember Briscoe brought this to the question.
The super majority requirement only exists for, to ensure that special meetings aren't willy-nilly called and business isn't flippantly conducted. So all you would need to post is a notice of quorum, and then council members can show up. But with no business taking place,
Right.
then there's not really a concern about a quorum or a super majority, or only one council member showing up. We just have to make sure we post that notice of potential quorum.
But we also need to know who's moderating it.
That's right.
Which is what you brought up first.
And so if this is...
Not willy-nilly either.
Right. I mean, if this council wants to create an agenda item to discuss the parameters of what a town hall would look like, it can do that, and then move forward from there and let Brenton make it happen.
If I may, I would think, okay, in a town hall setting, generally, you bring in the citizens to provide information. The citizens can ask for clarification. We did those for the Brook Hall construction and for several other things. I would hope that in a public hearing, particularly with something that is relevant to a tax note, it would be far more than that, that the citizens are there to express their opinion, their interest on the issue, and we are there to listen, and our steps, and any steps that we take after that should take that input from the citizens into consideration. At a town hall meeting, the citizens can ask questions. For example, we're scheduled to have one next week to present the results of the survey. We're sharing the survey. They'll have plenty of opportunity to ask questions, see clarification, make comments. But we are not, then, as we move forward with the comprehensive plan, we will have a public hearing. And it is a difference, in my opinion. One is far more binding, that the public hearing is binding on us. That is the forum for the citizens to tell us what they want. Am I right?
I think you're right. And listen, if someone asks my opinion, I think that if you're going to have a town hall, and maybe you want to have more than one town hall.
Oh, I think so.
You take advantage of the old finance director that you have. This being his, I'm serious, this being his area of expertise. I mean, city's very fortunate to have a manager that has the financial acumen that Brenton does, and have a series of town halls where citizens can take advantage of that knowledge, have occasion to fully and thoroughly understand what the options are, and then thereafter, and only after people have had at least a couple of occasions to take part in that process, then have your public hearing so that people can come in and say, "I attended town hall A, B, or C, and here are my thoughts, impressions, opinions, et cetera."
Yeah, that's very, that's good.
Let me put it in an example perspective. I learned that way. Here we have two issues. We have the issue of drainage. Drainage is an item in a budget. We're getting funded from the federal government. So it would be very appropriate to have a town hall meeting to share the information with the citizens, explain the process. But I think that when you get into the tax notes, you should have a public hearing, and where the citizens' presentations and opinions are binding upon us. Is that known?
Councilmember Brizendine, thank you.
So in a town hall, we could be serving as a panel more about listening and communicating rather than actively serving as a council member, correct? Because if in a town hall, if you've got someone in the audience that wants to ask a question of us, and we have pertinent information, we should be able to share that, not necessarily in a council advisory position or governmental position, but our experience from serving. So maybe we would serve more like a panel rather than?
Could, or simply, like, I've said this many times over the period of practicing law, there are certain rights that you don't check at the door simply by virtue of being an elected official. One of those is the right to associate, to speak, to take part in the process of government. And so whether or not this council wants to approve a town hall where there would be a panel, a single moderator, or some combination thereof, if Brenton's moderating that town hall, he would still have the opportunity to point out and say, "Thank you, Councilmember Brizendine, also citizen of the city of Wood Creek. What do you have to say?" Everyone could take part in that way. So it's not necessary that members of the council, officers or employees of the city play any special or specific role. You can still show up and impart your knowledge for everyone to take part.
So Councilmember Brizendine, so would you want to amend your motion to not just include a public hearing, but perhaps?
I would like to have the motion read back. It was so long ago. I forgot what I said.
The motion did not include a public hearing.
Let her read it.
Please read back. So the motion was to enter into a discussion for future repairs of the city of Wood Creek streets.
I can't hear her.
The motion was made, go ahead. Sorry, the motion was to enter into a discussion for future repairs of city of Wood Creek streets.
With no comment about future, okay, that's good. Unless you want to amend it to include that there will be...
Was that my motion?
Yes.
It was Aurora's motion?
Your second. Aurora, did you want to change, amend that to include reaching out to citizens through other opportunities?
Maybe help with that? So how about there be a motion that over the next 60 days, the city engage in at least two town hall meetings, up to three, to discuss the issue of repairs to the streets, those being town halls that will be moderated by city manager Lewis? And thereafter, the city will hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving citizen input on the issues discussed at those town hall meetings.
What he said.
Is that good for you? Yeah, that sounds good. What he says.
Would that accurately summarize the amendments to your motion?
The only concern that I have is that we have, this is something, it's actions that are being taken by this council, and in 60 days, there may be a different council. I know that actions that we take are not binding upon a future council, but I would say that if it's feasible that we begin the process of communication within the next 30 days.
Yeah, so in other words, at least one town hall within the next 30 days. And then unless, I mean, a future council always reserves the right to say, "Change direction."
And I think if we can do it within 30 days and close to the town hall that will happen next Tuesday, it would be relevant to the next steps in the comprehensive plan. So it would help both, it would help both actions, both the construction, as far as the development of goals objectives, and a timeline for the comprehensive plan.
So fair statement, two town halls within the next 45 days, and then as soon as practically possible thereafter, a public hearing.
I would say one town hall within the next 30 days, and if possible, maybe a public hearing.
A public hearing as soon as practically possible.
One town hall, one public hearing.
Okay.
Did you get all of that, Linda?
Piece of cake for her.
Whatever she said, I second. Then the motion to have a town hall within 30 days and a public hearing.
My motion is that in order to receive citizen input on possible future repairs or reconstruction of our streets and financing options, we call one town hall and one public hearing within the next 30 days to provide information and receive input from the citizens.
Can we have a second?
Yes. I was the first. I seconded in the first. I'll second the revision. To clarify, did you mean to hold the town hall and the public hearing within 30 days, or to schedule it within the next 30 days?
To schedule and hold.
Schedule and hold.
So we have a motion. Any discussion? Councilmember Briscoe.
Just that, you know, our city attorney was, when talking about the town halls versus the public hearings, you talked about doing the town hall in order to gather as much information as we can, and then have a public hearing as soon as practicable following the town hall. If we say, you know, a town hall and a public hearing within 30 days, are we going to be able to really pull that off without a special meeting?
I think if you have maybe a week or two in between, to be honest with you, there is so much that has been done, so much that we know about the roads, that we know about, we have a complete assessment of city roads, a priority assessment for how repairs should be conducted. We have, and we know the cost of fixing a road from repairs to complete reconstruction per mile. I think that we need to, what we're doing here is a town hall for the citizens to tell us, to inform the citizens, the citizens to speak freely. And then a public hearing, from there, you can have maybe a week, 10 days, where you come in and say, "This is, now you have facts." Like we said today, if you want to have, these are your options. Your options is a tax note. This is what it's going to cost. A bond. This is a bond. This is what it's going to cost. This is how much we can do with this. And then have the citizens, and we would have to publish those documents, have the citizens come back and say, "I am here because I do not want a tax note," or "I am here because I support a tax note to have nice roads." And we take, and that's a tally. That's the closest you can have to a public vote.
Councilmember Brizendine.
Also, I'd like to say that since we have the drainage money, we need to be able to move forward on the drainage. And if we don't know what our citizens want on roads, we need to get the drainage before we move to the roads. And so we need to kind of start narrowing our focus. And so to me, if we get it done quicker, then we can start appropriating that $400,000.
We also already have, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lewis, but we have engineer studies as well. Four engineer studies. So we have the data. We have information from the previous roads group. We have our current roads advisory group. We have all of these, all these roads outlined, and there's not a lot of homework there. We're ready to go to the citizens.
Just for clarification, to do the bond, we would need to do a regular city vote. Am I correct? Okay, so what we're really talking about here is extending our tax note at about $1.2 to $1.4 million. And we're leaving the bond discussion on the table. Pretty much, we're not going to deal with that at this point. We're really talking about extending that tax.
No, I think, go ahead.
No, I believe it'd be both, and what we'll do is, we'll have an estimate on how much it would be to basically repair or reconstruct all the remaining roads, and address the drainage, too, if we need to. And it could be a combination, both drainage and roads, or it could be two different initiatives? Yes, okay. So and have roads, and then vote on drainage, too. Because, but all of it has to be on the table upfront, because I would not support saying, "Let's go out and get the tax notes" as a recommendation, because the tax notes would be rolled into the bond issue anyway.
But the tax note timeline was like 30 days?
Tax notes, we could have them usually issued within 30 days.
My only thing was, I mean, I'm in full support. It's just, you know, it seems like a lot to do in 30 days, and pressure on staff, and also, I mean, everybody's cool with that.
And I was looking at the calendar coming up. So basically, we have the town hall meeting next week. We are preparing for the planning and zoning, and also the city council meeting on the 12th and 13th. And so today, you know, I was thinking, today's the 22nd, so we would have to have the first town hall meeting either that week, on the 14th, 15th, by the time we get everything prepared anyway, or the next week, and then we're within that 30 days. So it's, you know, 30 days is, I like the idea of 30 days, but with what all is going on in October?
Well, I think it's a good opportunity to, while this issue is even more in front of all of our citizens, that we go ahead and move forward. I don't think anyone will get penalized if we're not able to make it within that timeframe, but we'll try.
Well, what I would request is to say the town hall meeting within the 30 days, because we can do that. But then, as soon as possible afterwards, you know, the council might decide, well, let's not have another, not do the public hearing, let's do another town hall meeting. But let's get the first town hall meeting out of the way.
That's, okay.
I do have one more question about a town hall. Isn't it true that we have to stay on topic? It's not a GRAC session? I mean, I'm just asking.
Well, so if it's not a meeting of the council, then the question becomes, does that implicate the Open Meetings Act, but it's not a meeting? I mean, hypothetically, I guess someone could try and make a complaint that discussions deviated beyond, beyond the intended scope of the meeting. I don't think that such complaint would be well taken.
But then is a public hearing where it stays on topic? Okay, that's what I thought.
The caveat is, if you allow public comments, does someone then want to take advantage of the public comment provisions of the Open Meetings Act and say, "Yeah, well, I can discuss any matter of city business." So, you know, then you would need to clearly delineate the public comment section of the public hearing and the actual open hearing. So that if someone wants to show up at the public hearing and make a public comment at the beginning, they can take their three minutes and say whatever they want to say, but once the public hearing is open, the meeting will then be confined to its purpose.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Any other discussion?
Does Aurora need to amend her motion to make it a town hall rather than a public hearing within 30 days?
Would you read it, please?
Did you make that change?
So Mayor Proton LeBrun is going to amend her amendment to make the town hall meeting within 30 days.
Town hall meeting be held within 30 days.
Hearing after.
And the hearing recently after.
I think we, do we, do I need a second? Do I need a second for the third time? Okay, she needs a second for the third time.
Good discussion. So, city secretary has that. Do you want to read that back or not?
No.
Shall we? Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, so the whole first part that Aurora said, Mayor Proton LeBrun said about possible repairs in streets, and she said it very nobly, to have a town hall meeting within 30 days and a public hearing as soon as possible thereafter.
Yes.
Since city secretary, is everyone, any other discussion? City secretary, will you please call the roll vote?
Mayor Proton LeBrun.
Aye.
Councilmember Brusandine. I think so. Councilmember Hambry. Councilmember Pulley.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasko.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. There's no further business. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.